Time having arrived, I call a special meeting of the Broughton Housing Authority to order. It's two P M on Wednesday, September twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. We are in the Mayor Bill Carver's Executive Boardroom, Manning Tower, forty five Gower, Gordon Road, Broughton, Mass., oh two three oh one. A notice has been posted at City Hall and on our website. The agenda is available up front if anybody needs it. Please note that all Broughton Housing Authority meetings are recorded. This is a public hearing and all are invited. Chair Timothy J. Sullivan, Vice Chair Ernest Pettifat, Member Janet D. Kraft, Treasurer Cal Roberts. You are hereby given notice that members of the Broughton Housing Authority are called to meet in a special session on Wednesday, September twenty seventh, twenty twenty three at two P M in the Mayor Bill Carver's Executive Boardroom, Manning Tower, forty five Gower, first floor, Broughton, Mass., oh two three oh one. This meeting slash hearing of the Broughton Housing Authority will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance in our participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meetings slash hearings will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems erupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda could make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. The public is invited to view and/or listen to the meeting via phone, computer, laptop, or tablet. To do so, download the Zoom Cloud Meeting app in any app store or at www.zoom.us at two o'clock on September twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. Click on Join the Meeting and enter the meeting ID number eight two seven five three two zero four three zero seven, passcode six five zero five one seven. Or use the link http dot double slash zoom dot us slash i slash eight two seven five three two zero four three zero seven. You may also join by calling the conference line at one six four six five five eight eight six five six at two P M on September twenty seventh, twenty twenty three and enter meeting ID eight two seven five three two zero four three zero seven, passcode six five zero five one seven, followed by the pound sign. The Board Chair will instruct participants on appropriate time and manner for other comments during the meeting. I'm gonna read out the COVID nineteen from Governor Baker. Due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic and state of emergency on March twelfth, twenty twenty, Governor Baker issued an executive order temporarily suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General laws, chapter thirty eight, section twenty. Pursuant to the order, public parties are temporarily relieved from the open meeting law's requirement that meetings be held in public places open and physically accessible to the public so long as measures are taken to ensure public access to the body's deliberations through adequate and alternative means. That notice was extended to April first, twenty twenty one, extended again to April first, twenty twenty two, extended again to July first, twenty twenty two, extended again July fifteenth, twenty twenty two, extended again on March thirty first, twenty twenty three by Governor Baker, and again amended March thirty first, twenty twenty five by Governor Haley. If we could all rise, if you can, remove your hat, put your cell phones on silent for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I just wanted to note that we have two people on Zoom. Commissioner Janet Kraft and Ernest Pettifat, I don't see them up there anymore.
If I could just note, while we were doing the Pledge of Allegiance, I saw that his connection was lost. So he was here. Hopefully he'll be able to come back, but we still do have a forum.
Yeah, we're a forty of five, three of our forum with Janet Kraft, Cal Roberts was just here, and I'm here, Tim Sullivan.
I do want to note, Mr. Chairman, that our board member who was approved by the city council is observing. I do not believe she's been sworn in, but that's Ms. Harris.
We need a roll call, Ms. Peoples?
Commissioner Trask.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
Here. Do have a forum. Item two. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June twenty second, twenty twenty three and the annual meeting of June twenty third, twenty twenty three exhibit A in your package. Mr. Peoples?
I have reviewed those minutes and I find them to be in order. I would recommend that the board approve the minutes written.
So moved.
Need a second, Janet?
Second.
Sorry.
Was that Ernie? You're back?
Ernie, go.
Yes.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat. Motion is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June twenty second, twenty twenty three and the annual meeting of June twenty third, twenty twenty three as written. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Peoples?
Commissioner Trask.
Here.
Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Item three, hearing of visitors. Any member of the public is invited to speak before the board. Visitors wishing to be heard must sign in with name, address, and contact number before the start of each meeting. Each visitor will be allowed three minutes to speak on each subject. The board will take any issue under advisement and respond at a later date. Total time for hearing of visitors will be limited to fifteen minutes, which will be strictly enforced. There will be no passing year three minutes for another. All visitors can be heard on agenda items only. Are there any hearing of visitors?
Nobody in the room has signed in, and I don't know if anybody who is on virtually would like to speak. If so, please let us know now. I believe so. Believe not, Mr. Chairman. Correspondent? No, there is no correspondent. By your bylaws, it has to be that. It's part of your bylaws. Nothing here, nothing there.
That we know where to pull?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Item four was correspondence. There is none. Item five. Approval of the bills of the special meeting of September twenty seventh, twenty twenty three exhibit B in your package. Commissioner Roberts?
Yes, I have reviewed the bills with Tom and Tanya, and there were a couple of questions that were answered, and so I make a motion to amend the bills. As they are.
Okay. Need a second, Janet up. Ernie?
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Kraft. Motion is to approve the bills for the special meeting of September twenty seventh, twenty twenty three as presented. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Peoples?
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carried unanimously. Item six. Authorize Executive Director and Chair to execute wage match certification exhibit C in your package. Mr. Peoples?
This is a new certification. We have access to a database supported by the Department of Revenue. Six of our employees have that access. They have to go through a training and then sign the forms that have attached to this memo. The board members also have to certify that they understand that we have access to it and that they understand that this is for only to be used by people who are, need to know. So, for example, I don't have access to this because I don't need to do recertifications for rents. Chris Blaine Barney, some of her staff do that for the state program. Dennis Cheedy, some of his staff do that, but they're program. So it's a very limited access that we have to this information, and I want the board to understand that as well as all the employees.
We need a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion is to authorize the Chair and the Executive Director to sign a notice confirming that the wage match acknowledgment and the D O R disclosure have been read and signed by appropriate staff only. Any questions or discussion on the moment, on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Peoples?
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carries unanimously. Item seven. Approval of the twenty twenty three utility allowance schedule exhibit C in your package. Mr. Peoples?
If I could ask Ms. Barney to speak on this item, please?
Yes, good afternoon, members of the board. Every year, as per Health Department, Protection Department has to review the utility costs in the area. We contract with the Oral Coronial Planning Council to conduct that survey to determine the size of the bedrooms, the size of the bedroom, and then the building numbers. If there have been any changes, we need to update our schedule. With your approval, we'd like to adopt the new payment standard for October first, twenty twenty three. For example, for this year, the price of oil has decreased by forty one percent, and the electricity has increased by fifty two point sixty nine percent. And if you can see in the schedule, that's a high in the electricity price for one bedroom, two bedroom, but it depends on the room.
These numbers are used. We, we, people pay thirty percent of their adjusted gross income for rent, which includes utilities. So if they have to pay their own utilities, we reduce their percent, their thirty percent by these numbers.
We need a motion and a second?
So moved.
But, Janet?
Yes.
Ernie, second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat. Motion is to approve the twenty twenty three utility allowance as presented effective October first, twenty twenty three. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Peoples?
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Chris.
Item eight. Review of twenty twenty two independent fiscal audit exhibit E in your package.
So as the board knows, the last couple of years due to COVID have been very difficult for operations. We have had some turnover in our financial staff, so the, the audit was one that we were not looking forward to. The good news is that it was an excellent audit. All of our finances were found to be in, be in order. The housing authority is in good financial shape. Now, we send this to all our bankers and our investors. We have some bonds and we send that out to our bond companies, to the banks that loan us money. So most of it's written for them. But if you look in the management discussion and analysis, it's the first, starts on page four and goes for about four or five pages. It's written in more layman's terms and tells you a little bit about what's happening at the authority. It tells you the trends that you see, the trends are good, but it is something that I recommend that if anybody from the public wants to know a little bit about the financial operations of the authority, to take a look at that. And it shows it listed out in pie charts, so if you can tell where our money's coming from, where our money's going to, those type of things. So the purpose of it being on the board, on the agenda, is for the board to accept it and to put it on file. And by the way, a clean audit, they say everything's fine and they walk away. If they have findings, it can take your whole, your whole next year to make sure it's right. So you always want, as my finance people know, you want a clean audit. Nice work. Thank you. I want the staff, they were very appreciative of all the work the staff did. They've been traveling around the country. The issues that they've seen in different organizations are not unique to Massachusetts and the Broughton, and they were very laudatory to the work of our staff.
We need a motion and a second, item eight?
Yeah. So moved.
In a second?
Okay.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat. Motion is to accept the twenty twenty two fiscal audit, financial audit report and put on file. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Peoples?
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carries unanimously. Item nine. Recognition of employee actions above and beyond the call of duty. Exhibit F in your package.
So as you can see from my write-up, we have an employee, a maintenance employee, Mr. Thomas Carbonara, who has gone way above his call of duty in very distressing circumstances. I think because of the circumstances, I don't want to get into the details of them. Needless to say, he put his own life in jeopardy. But I believe, I like to share these stories, and I do think this goes to the level that I would recommend that the board have this put into his personnel file and recognize him by awarding him a a personal day, one day, one day on personal day.
Thank you, too.
The biggest complaint our employees have, they don't complain about it, but they have trouble using their time. Myself, Mr. Barry, several of the maintenance employees, including this one, do have time, have problems using all their time. We're government, so we can't pay bonuses, there's no things like that. So this is one way you can recognize it.
We need a motion and a second, item nine?
So moved.
So. Ernie, too.
Janet, was that a second?
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat, seconded by Commissioner Janet Kraft. The motion is, in recognition of his actions of Mr. Thomas Carbonara in the assistance of the Broughton Police and without regard for his own personal safety, we, the board of the Broughton Housing Authority, commend Mr. Carbonara for his selflessness, grant him one personal day with pay and direct that the record of this vote be inserted into Mr. Carbonara's personnel file. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Hey, guys, this is Jay from the mayor's office. Just wanted to really quickly make a comment. If you guys wanted us to recognize him at all, please just feel free to reach out and we can maybe do so if that's something that you guys would like.
Thank you, Jay.
That's very nice.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Any other question? Roll call, Mr. Peoples?
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I do, if I could make one note, the Mr. Carbonara did not think this was a big deal. He said, what else was I supposed to do? Which is what you see people who do these type of things do.
Motion carries unanimously.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Item ten. Appointment of family self-sufficiency coordinator. Exhibit G in your package.
If I could ask Mr. Sheedy to speak on this?
Thank you, Mr. Sheedy. Our commission is, in June of this year, due to a transfer, the Broughton Housing Authority posted internally and advertised on Indeed and the Mass Narrow website to fill a vacant position for the family self-sufficiency coordinator. We received a good amount of resumes and out of those, we selected seven candidates for initial interviews. And we narrowed that down to four candidates for second interviews. And even though there were some very qualified candidates, it was clear to us that Jacqueline Malloy, I got your name right this time, Jacqueline, of Waymouth is the right candidate for the job. Ms. Malloy has a long history in case management in the medical field and most recently took over the Quincy F S S department. During her interview, she described the actions she took to make the Quincy F S S department successful from a case management approach and engaging with community partners. Her enthusiasm is evident, was evident throughout her interviews, and as you can see from her attached resume, she has a bachelor's degree in a menified college.
If I could add on to that, I see that Cynthia McDonough is here today. Cynthia was held this position for thirty years. She, she did drug elimination first grant and then the family self-sufficiency. And the unique thing that Cynthia brought to this program was a ability to be creative and thoughtful about what we spoke, Commissioner Roberts, earlier today, that the obstacles in front of people aren't always the same. And speaking to Ms. Malloy, I found that she had that energy, that thought process, that how can we get there? And be organized doing it because we are still dealing with government money. So it has to be done in the right way. So I concur with the recommendation of Mr. Sheedy.
We need a motion and a second, item ten?
So moved. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Kraft. Motion to appoint Jacqueline Malloy of Waymouth to the position of family self-sufficiency coordinator effective October sixteen, twenty twenty three at the twenty twenty three step one rate of sixty three thousand four hundred forty two dollars per annum. Any discussion or questions on the motion?
That's such an important role. I'm so glad we have somebody to do that.
Jack, could you come over here just for a second? I'm just, because usually the board members would be sitting here just, so they know, yeah, you could just stand this like, this is Jacqueline Malloy, on the right is Commissioner Pettifat on the left.
Jacqueline, yay!
Just so everybody gets to see it, because in your regular day-to-day business, you don't often come in contact with the commissioners.
Well, thanks for coming, guys. I'm excited to join our organization.
You're welcome to come here. We're over here, once more.
Okay, very good.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Jacqueline, this is what we're all about, is helping families to thrive. So, thank you.
Hey, can I just say, I was reading your resume that I saw that you worked with high-risk patients that are quite critical then.
I did, yes, at Social Hospital. So about the last four years of my career at Social Hospital, I did a transitional, we did the transitional care program. So it was working with the high-risk population that kept re-admitting back to the hospital to try to figure out what was it as far as because it wasn't just medical reasons. That's where we discovered a lot of psychosocial stuff.
Gotcha.
If I could also let you know one else, one other thing about Ms. Malloy, she can drive a tow truck.
Wow.
He is telling you the truth.
Her, her family, her father, who passed away unexpectedly, owned a tow truck company and she took it over and sold it.
And I learned all aspects of it.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Is that in Broughton?
No, it's in Waymouth.
And, and the high-risk people, I, I mean, that's right now, that's one of the biggest issues in our country with, with, in every area, you know, in housing and in hospitals, as you did so well, and so it's really critical to have somebody to do this good work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carried unanimously. Item eleven. Appointment of home ownership leasing agent. Exhibit H in your package.
So we have, by the way, Mr. Clark is not here. His son, as you may know, graduated from the Niago Academy. He went through flight school and he's being winged in.
Ah.
Winged, so he's down in Florida right now.
Nice.
So I'll present this. We have an opening in the Rental Assistance Department under Ms. Chris Lane Barney. We advertise this position and we got a number of people who apply. The recommendation is for Patricia Mullen. Patricia has worked in the banking industry for a long time. I had just such a wonderful conversation with her on the day, I don't know if everybody remembers, that we had tornado warnings coming about every five minutes. We came to her appointment despite tornadoes. But one thing that comes across about Ms. Mullen is her work ethic, her commitment to getting it done when working as a team. And when, one of our biggest groups of people is in the Rental Assistance Department, and it's important that everybody be able to work as a team. Chris Lane Barney is a wonderful leader there. She understands, I always say, now, this is, you forget about the ages here, okay, but she's got the tough mother love. She really cares about everybody who she assists and she works with, but she does run a tight ship, and I think Patricia, you'll enjoy that. I think she's a very good candidate and highly recommend her.
Any questions or discussions on the motion? I'll raise the motion off. Motion is to appoint Patricia Mullen of Abington to the position of Home Ownership Leasing Officer effective twenty twenty third of twenty, October twenty third, twenty twenty three as a step twenty three, twenty twenty three step one rate of forty four thousand nine hundred seventy three dollars per annum. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Peoples?
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Motion carries unanimously.
And this is Mrs. Mullen. Mullen right here. Congratulations.
I appreciate the opportunity. I'm really looking forward to working with the team and everyone else in the group and the organization. Thank you so much. I too had a game on that day, a little bit of fun, you know, all about us.
There was a tornado around us. There was a lot of old home weight, because she knows a lot about we know a lot of people in common.
Exactly, yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So you're a tough woman.
Yes.
She's a New Englander.
This is for Jacqueline and Patricia. Normally, I do it separately. But the board, what the board does is puts all our tenants first, they're number one. If somebody has a bad day, please overlook that and bring it forward. And I tell you, without them, they don't need us. If they don't need us, they don't need you. So let's keep it going. All of them are happy to be here. Thank you.
I sometimes get people who aren't too happy.
Yeah.
We do, we do what we can to make it as possible.
Item twelve. Approval of twenty nineteen actual modernization cost certificate. Exhibit A in your package, Mr. Peoples?
So the next several items are things that have been basically disfurred over the summer because we haven't met, and that's what makes this meeting especially long. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Barry on the next items and he can walk the board through them.
Thank you. More numbers?
Work on slowly.
In April of two thousand nineteen, the Department of Housing Urban Development awarded the Broughton Housing Authority two thousand nineteen comprehensive grant in the amount of three million, six hundred and ten thousand five hundred and forty dollars in capital improvements to our federal development. As of the posting date of May twenty third, two thousand twenty three, all funds for the Authority's two thousand nineteen comprehensive grant have been obligated and expedited for the capital fund program. We recommend you approve the two thousand nineteen actual modernization cost certificates as presented.
If I could, I just want to add, this is a big deal. Housing authorities that don't do this have the money taken away from them, and then they give it to others. Boston Housing Authority lost twenty five percent of their portfolio due to not spending the money they had. So it's, although it's a very simple ministerial issue now, it's huge if you don't do it right. So although it's a very simple ministerial issue now, it's huge if you don't do it right. Chris has done it and through COVID, it was not easy.
Yeah.
Let's get a motion.
Yep.
We need a motion and a second.
Yep.
Item twelve.
So moved.
Go ahead.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trapp. Motion is to approve the twenty nineteen actual modernization cost certificate as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Janet, you're muted.
Was the Boston issue rate recently?
No, it was a number of years back. They had about eighty million dollars they didn't spend and they had a number of condemned units.
Oh. I'm sure they'd be happy to get it back again now.
Over the authority.
Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trapp, you're muted.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifett?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Item thirteen, approval of change order number three. Phase three C exterior repairs at Capri Towers Project twenty-seven, twenty-four dash seven, exhibit J in your package. Mr. Tebow?
Mr. Barry, please.
And the change, this change order includes additional concrete repairs in zones one through six. Additional hybrid hodge repairs and hodge credits in zones one through five. Additional crack repairs in zones one through six and an one hundred and eighteen day time extension. The Kinnon, the Kinnon has scrutinized all the additional repair numbers on a daily basis and challenges or refuses quantities if necessary. We would recommend to approve change order number three in the amount of sixty-five thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and twenty-six cents. The Chapman waterproofing of six-twenty South Street during E over at Mass City above mentioned project. You know, I'm happy to answer.
Is this when he came back, Chris?
This is actually somewhat of a few prior to him coming back.
Okay.
Yeah. So we did zones, you know, we did zones, sections of the building, because the building kind of double L shape. And so we counted them out and around in one through eight and that's why I see zones one through, and it's just a side of a building, a building, each side of the building.
We need a motion and a second. The motion is to approve change order number three in the amount of fifty-five thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and twenty-six cents for the contract with Chapman Waterproof Company of Holbrook Mass for the phase three C exterior repairs at Capri Towers Project twenty-four dash seven. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Need a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Janet.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trapp. I'll read it again. That motion is to approve change order number three in the amount of sixty-five thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and twenty-six cents for the contract with Chapman Waterproof Company of Holbrook Mass for the phase three C exterior repairs at Capri Towers Project twenty-four dash seven. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifett?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Item fourteen, approval of change order number four. Phase three C exterior repairs at Capri Towers Project twenty-four dash seven, exhibit K in your package. Mr. Tebow?
If I could ask Mr. Barry to speak, please?
And again, this change order includes additional concrete, concrete repairs in zone seven and eight. Additional hybrid hodge repairs and hodge credits in zone seven and eight. Additional crack repairs in zone seven and eight. Additional flashing and sitting lounges in zone seven. Relocation of a damaged balcony rail in a fifty-two day time extension. Once again, the Kinnon has scrutinized the additional repair numbers on a daily basis, challenge or refuse quantities if necessary. We would recommend to approve change order number four in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. Chapman Waterproof Company of six-twenty South Street Unit E, Holbrook Mass, to the above mentioned project.
We need a motion and a second. Item fourteen.
Yeah, so moved. Give it to her. Second.
The motion is to approve change order number four in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-six cents for the contract with Chapman Waterproof Company of Holbrook Mass for the phase three C exterior repairs at Capri Towers Project twenty-four dash seven. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifett?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously.
You have a lot going on over there, Carol.
Yeah. Yeah.
Item fifteen. Approval of change order number five, phase three C exterior repairs at Capri Towers Project twenty-four seven, exhibit L in your package.
I do want to make a comment on this. We had legal action against this company. It's taken years to settle this. You would not normally see this number of change orders at one meeting for one project. So we normally don't, we keep our change orders very low. And I just want that said for the public record. Mr. Barry?
This change order includes a special payment, additional vertical joint sealant and additional colorant for the sitting lounge in zone eight with a four-day time extension. Again, the Kinnon, the Kinnon has scrutinized all additional repair numbers on a daily basis, refuse the quantities if necessary. We would recommend to approve change order number five in the amount of eleven thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-two cents to Chapman Waterproof Company of six-twenty South Street Unit E, Holbrook Mass, to the above mentioned project.
We need a motion and a second. Item fifteen.
So moved.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trapp, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettifett. Motion is to approve change order number five in the amount of eleven thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-two cents for the contract with Waterproof Company of Holbrook Mass for the phase three C exterior repairs at Capri Towers Project twenty-four dash seven. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
So we won't be using this company again?
No, no, no. The company actually is honestly out for a real.
Roll call, Mr. Tebow? No, I hear no questions.
Commissioner Trapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifett?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Item sixteen. Acceptance of comment on Brockton Housing Authority's annual plan and approval of the resolution number twenty-three dash eight, resolution approving submission of the Brockton Housing Authority's annual plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Exhibit M in your package, Mr. Tebow?
So for quite some time, the Brockton Housing Authority has been required to do an annual plan. And at the beginning, it came out of Quality Responsibility, Quality Housing and Work Responsibility Act of ninety-six. And they found shortly thereafter that it really, it was supposed to let the public know what housing authorities were doing. And it really didn't do that, but we're still required to do it. Now that we're a moving to work agency, it is much, much more important because we have much more latitude. So in this, there's actually three plans. One is the annual plan for the housing authorities operations. It talks about, you know, what we do right down to, do we have a police officer who lives in the neighborhood? And we do, he lives in Roosevelt Heights. Two bigger programs. Then there's the moving to work plan where we say, these are the alternative things that we're doing that no other housing authority can do unless they're moving to work. And then there's the capital plan. Which capital plan all used to go and you had to lay it out line by line by line. Now we put it into one line. And it all goes into moving to work money. Moving to work money is very flexible money. And then Mr. Barry, working with the other staff, puts together a plan that sits behind there. And that's what's included in here. It's been posted in our sites, on the bulletin boards. It's been on our website. We have shared it with the RAB. And so today is for the board to accept it. Once you accept it, that closes the comment period. I would recommend that it be accepted. We are using more of our flexibilities. It does say that we'll be using some of the money for the Campello Project and Chris Lane Barney's program, which is where most of the flexibility is. We are now doing security deposits. We're doing landlord incentives to get better units and more units. That, again, that's unique and that's in here. We have met with landlords. They met in the parking lot, the parking lot down at ten ninety Main Street. They met with participants. So it is a real public, and we are held to a higher standard of public public comment on this and we have done that. So I do recommend that it.
And also, when, yeah, if you for someone who's on tenure, the first year that you went back to work, we're going to exclude just your force, your salary or your wage. And we're using the tenure for one year, like another incentive to encourage them to stay to go back to work.
So tenure is transitional assistance for needy families. It was known as welfare. When they go to work, we won't use their increase. So it gives them a year to get going.
Okay.
And so I do. We need a motion and a second from anybody?
So moved.
Go ahead.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettifett. Motion is to approve resolution number twenty-three dash eight, resolution approving the submission of the Brockton Housing Authority's annual plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Any discussion or question on the motion?
Just reading over the deconcentration of poverty policy, that's a pretty critical document. You know, I mean, like really going along with what our mission is with the Brockton Housing Authority and the three strategies that we are doing.
For the commissioners, it's one of the most difficult things we do because of the cost of units in non-low income areas. And there's also, remember, a lot of the people who are getting this assistance, that's their neighborhood. They are in low-income neighborhoods and they don't want to move. So there's been a lot of experiments in this. Chicago Housing Authority has been a leader in it and we actually worked with them on some of their programs to try to do that. But yes, it is an important part. The program is supposed to be, you go out and you live in the community.
It seems like this, this one page, this document on the deconcentration of poverty policy is something we should make readily available for our residents just to see what, what we want to do through the self-sufficiency efforts, the deconcentration policy and the participant education and landlord outreach. It's not, the page isn't numbered. It's, you can't really, but, but it is, just in reading it over, it's, it's pretty important.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifett?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Item seventeen. Approval of certificate of completion consolidated and certificate of release, phase three C exterior repairs at Capri Towers Project twenty-four dash seven. Exhibit N in your package, Mr. Tebow?
We gave Mr. Barry a short brief rest there. He's got the next six items. So I'd like to refer this to Mr. Barry.
Thank you. Again, capital improvements is deemed Chapman Waterproofing of six-twenty South Street Unit E, Holbrook Mass, complete as of August fifth, two thousand and twenty-two for the comprehensive modernization phase three C exterior project as per the specifications. Capital improvements has also confirmed that the construction work meets all applicable codes and that Chapman Waterproof has addressed all functionless items. We would recommend to approve the certificate of completion consolidated and certificate of release as of August fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, to Chapman Waterproof Company of six-twenty South Street Unit E, Holbrook Mass for the comprehensive phase three C exterior project.
We need a motion and a second. Item seventeen.
So moved.
Second, Janet, already?
Oh, I thought Ernie said it.
Ernie, did you second that?
I all moved it.
Oh, sorry.
Ernie, I didn't hear what you said.
I saw moved it.
Yeah, he and Carol said it about the same time.
Yeah. It's okay, Ernie.
Thank me and Carol got this up.
So I'll make, I'll give the motion to Ernie?
Yeah.
And second to you, Carol?
Yeah.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pettifett, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion is to approve certificate of completion consolidated and certificate of release as of August fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, to the contract with Chapman Waterproof Company of Holbrook for the phase three C exterior repairs at Capri Towers Project twenty-four dash seven. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
No. All right.
Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifett?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes, yes, and yes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Motion carries unanimously.
That's that company again.
Yeah. For a while, I was saying.
Hey, man.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, approval of change order number one, ADA Doors and Operators Federal High Rise Development. Exhibit O in your package, Mr. Tebow?
If I could ask Mr. Barry to speak on it, please?
Z, Espaola Corp. Is requesting a no, no cost time extension for forty-nine calendar days due to supply chain delivery issues with the storefront doors and associated materials attributed to the ongoing COVID-nineteen pandemic. We would recommend to accept change order number one as a no-cost change order for forty-nine calendar day time extension to Espaola on Construction Corp. Of eleven eighty-three Main Street, South, South Wayman's Mass for the BHA Federal High Rise ADA Doors and Operators Project.
We need a motion and a second. Item eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trapp, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion is to approve change order number one, a no-cost forty-nine calendar day time extension to the contract with Espaola Construction Corporation of South Wayman's Mass for the Brockton Housing Authority's Federal High Rise ADA Doors and Operators Project. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifett?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Item nineteen, approval of certificate of completion consolidated and certificate of release, ADA Doors and Operators Federal High Rise Development Exhibit P in your package, Mr. Tebow?
If I could ask Mr. Barry to speak on this, please?
Again, capital improvements is deemed Espaola Construction Corp. of eleven eighty-three Main Street, South Wayman's Mass complete as of August fourth, two thousand and twenty-three for the BHA Federal High Rise ADA Doors and Operator Project as per the specifications. Capital improvements has also confirmed that the construction work meets the applicable code and that Espa Dola Construction has addressed all functional items. We recommend to approve certificate of completion consolidated and certificate of release as of August fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. To Espa Dola Construction Corp of eleven eighty-three Main Street, South Way, Mass. For the BHA Federal High Rise ADA Doors and Operators Project.
We need a motion and a second, item nineteen.
Hello.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to approve the certificates of consolidated and certificate of release. As of August four, twenty twenty-three, to the contract with Espa Dola Construction Corporation of South Way, Mass. For the Brockton Housing Authority's Federal High Rise ADA Door and Operator Project. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We'll call Mr. Tibo.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty. Approval of change order number one, HVAC makeup air unit replacement, high-rise development, exhibit Q in your package, Mr. Tibo.
I could ask Mr. Barry to speak on this.
Uh, General Air, General Air Conditioning and Heating Incorporated is requesting a no cost time extension of two hundred and forty-four calendar days. For the makeup air units due to the supply chain issue. With the makeup air units and the associated materials attributed to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic. We would recommend accept change order number one, a no cost change order, two hundred and forty-four calendar day time extension. From General Air Conditioning and Heating Incorporated of Seven Gaston Street, Dorchester, Mass. For the BHA-wide uh high-rise uh high-rise HVAC project.
If if I just want to add on to this. So you're seeing these no no cost time extensions because of supply chain issues. That goes in contrast to what Mr. Barry has to do. He has forty-eight months to spend the money. There's twenty-four months to obligated forty-eight to spend. So when he gets news like this, it's horrible news then. Because he's not going to meet the deadline and he has to figure out how to spend his money in a timely manner, which he does. I just want if you have to understand that. The difficulties. It sometimes he encounters to get this stuff done.
Yeah.
Chris, one question. The supply chain, that that hasn't been fixed yet?
No, and one day, one day, hopefully before I retire, I will not have to say due to pandemic and supply chain issue. Right now, we just got, uh, we've talked in the first capital. It's been over a year now.
Yeah.
Uh, we have uh a project going out there. It's exceeding a year and a half for the switch here, let's do something we need. So that project, I can't go out to bid for that project. I'm gonna have to probably change it till we go out to bid for material only. And then a year and a half, I can then take it and go and get electrician for that end of the board.
One question. We used to see the uh the ships coming in from the harbor in California backed up. Like three or four hundred of all the ocean trying to get in. Does that fall now or?
Yeah, yeah, there's some material, some of the material, because a lot of the gang coming coming out of time. Uh, we actually may also look to do custom-made electrical components as opposed to wait a year and a half. That's the option we have. Um, one of the problems is whether or not we can get our expenditure in time or not. That, you know, but yeah, we have our, we have our uh timeframe on our expenditure and we have to look at where we have.
It's not, but all those ships, that that has been pretty much been addressed. That was a longshoreman issue they had there also, but. We're finding that we can get, say, a large component, but there's a a small uh thing that you need to attach it. Uh, you just had an issue with the lint trap over Kennedy Drive, correct?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, it's small stuff, but you can't install it without it and and it's just holding up the job. Um, but it is, hopefully it will break through and hopefully some uh. Some ambitious um people in the country will start new manufacturing jobs and stop bumping these out.
The rooftop units at Capri Towers were, we we changed to a different manufacturer because when you get them quick, you know, we're waiting a year now. We got the rooftop unit, but the low uh high efficiency motor was what. Um, we're waiting for all the time. So one of the components for it.
This, is it slowly improving? I mean, like, do you see any? Light at the end of the tunnel?
No.
No.
Not yet. We're holding, we're hoping. And again, whenever whenever you're here in a year to a year and a half for a product, that's a shelf item.
Yeah. Yeah.
We need a motion and a second, item twenty.
Uh, so move.
Go ahead.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat. Motion is to approve change order number one. At a no cost, two hundred and forty-four calendar day time extension to the contract with General Air Conditioning and Heating Incorporated of Dorchester, Mass. For the HVAC makeup air unit replacement at Brockton Housing Authority High Rise Development. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We'll call Mr. Tibo.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-one. Approval of certificate of completion consolidated, certificate of release, HVAC makeup air unit replacement. High-rise development, exhibit R in your package, Mr. Tibo.
Could ask Mr. Barry to speak on it.
And uh, capital improvements is deemed General Air Conditioning and Heating of Seven Gaston Street, Dorchester, Mass, complete as of August tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. For the DHAY High Rise HVAC Project, as per the specification. Capital improvements has also confirmed that the construction work meets the applicable code and and. That General Air Conditioning and Heating has addressed all functional items. We would recommend to approve the certificate of completion consolidated and a sticker to release as of August tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The General Air Conditioning and Heating of Seven Gaston Street, Dorchester, Mass. For the PHA-wide High Rise HVAC Project.
We need a motion and a second, item twenty-one.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion to approve certificate of completion consolidated and certificate of release as of August tenth, twenty twenty-three. For the contract with General Air Conditioning Replacement and Heating Incorporated of Dorchester, Mass. For the HVAC makeup air unit replacement at Brockton Housing Authority's High Rise Development. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We'll call Mr. Tibo.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-two. Approval of change order number one, creative place making Kennedy Drive, project six six seven dash two. Exhibit after your package, Mr. Tibo.
I just, before I turn it over to Mr. Barry for his last item, I want to let Commissioner Trask know that this is the grant that we. Heard about in November of two thousand and nineteen, applied for a Kennedy Drive and uh. It's finally up and running and probably will be done in the next uh two or three months. So we're moving along, Mr. Barry, if I could ask you to speak on it.
Thank you.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Contact for the Kennedy Drive Creative Place Making found additional specific pipe fittings in between the walls during demolition. Additionally, there were um, there were a number of roof beams that required system and sister in. Due to the removal of the interior fireplace. After review of Riga's estimate in the amount of three thousand four hundred and seven dollars fifty-seven cents. For this work, capital improvements, the authority architect and the construction advisor for EO HLC. Deemed it to be reasonable and 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 industry standard. We would recommend to accept change order number one. In the amount of three thousand four hundred and seven dollars fifty-seven cents. On the reconstruction of two nineteen Walnut Street, Suite B, Westbridge Water Mass. For the Kennedy Drive Creative Placemaking Project.
We need a motion and a second, item twenty-two.
I'm so moved.
Hello.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to approve change order number one, in the amount of three thousand four hundred and seven dollars fifty-seven cents. To the contract with Riga Construction Incorporated of Westbridge Water Mass for the Kennedy Drive Project six six seven dash two. Creative placemaking project. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We'll call Mr. Tibo.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously.
Will we have a party here?
Oh, sorry.
Chris Lane is over here. She's she's excited that Chris is sitting down.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
It's about time. You've made that a long day.
Oh.
Item twenty-three, approval of twenty twenty-four state annual plan and five-year capital plan, exhibit T in your package, Mr. Tibo.
If I could ask uh Mr. Sheedy to speak on this.
Thank you, Mr. Tibo Boardman. This. The in-state annual plan is a requirement of the Housing Reform Act of two thousand and thirteen. This is the fourth year we've put this together. The plans compile the policies, budgets, and plans, most of which, if not all, you have approved in the past. Uh, you'll find uh. The budget in there, the uh maintenance plan, preventative maintenance plan, the five-year capital plan, it falls on the state side now. It was posted on the website beginning of August. It was posted in all the state developments in the beginning of August. I met with the RAB on September twelfth to go over. The plan, uh, it's its intention is to provide transparency. To the housing authority residents and the housing and the general public. Um, I believe Mr. Tibo has said if you want to get a basic understanding on the operations of the housing authorities, a good place to stop.
Yeah.
Will you?
We need a motion and a second, item twenty-two.
Hello.
I'm moved.
That's you, item twenty-three, sorry.
Yeah. Ernie. Ernie. I'm doing it.
Hello.
A motion has been made by by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to approve Brockton Housing Authority's twenty twenty-four annual plan and five-year capital plan as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
It looks like the state is using a lot more languages than they. Did previously. The federal government doesn't do that, right?
No, it does not. And um it 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 has to do with some uh uh code of Massachusetts regulations, CMRs. Um, in in the the housing authority is required to translate into uh predominant languages. So in Brockton, that's Portuguese, French, and Spanish. And English, obviously. So it's four. Um, you know, this, they do it for the entire state. So these are predominant languages that go across the state for the notices.
How many languages is it?
I think it's sixteen or eighteen.
Wow.
There's a lot that, I mean, there's there's some languages in here that the the city of Brockton might not have a a person or two that lived.
Yeah.
That speak these languages, but um, that's that comes with a template. That's not an optional uh. Option of ours to select.
So we're doing, the state is doing better than the federal government.
At at killing trees.
Yes. Yes, that's some of the instances, Thai. Chinese.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. We'll call Mr. Tibo.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-four. Appointment of affordable housing LIHTC asset manager, exhibit U in your package, Mr. Tibo.
Uh, uh, LIHC is low-income housing tax credit. Um, and we're putting, this is why Priscilla came, right? Had to sit through a meeting, um, listen to Chris.
Lot but not least.
Um, so this is the position that was previously filled by Ava Hewitt. Ava Hewitt uh returned home and her home was down on the Caribbean Island. Um, Priscilla, uh, Ms. Pimentel, I I apologize, uh, has a lot of experience working uh with low-income families. Uh, Harbor Point Apartments, she worked at for eleven or twelve, uh, twelve or thirteen years. Uh, which is a, it's the old Columbia Point. Um, they have a a number of uh fair market rent places there. They have a low-income tax credit place there and then they have. Uh, subsidies there. She worked quite a bit with the, not. Working for the housing authority, but working with the Boston Housing Authority on section eight uh programs. Um, in my conversation with her, she is a very, uh, she's very strong in what she knows here. She's currently working for Peabody Properties. Uh, the Tibbetts in Rhode Island. Uh, we're looking for a couple of things here. This is a a smaller program, a hundred units, but they're scattered all throughout the city. She oversees the SMAT. This oversees the SMAT property and affordable housing. Uh, we have project-based vouchers there. Uh, and we're looking to use low-income tax credits to expand our production of affordable housing. Uh, so we look at that. Um, and she's also fluent in Spanish, reading, writing, and speaking.
Hmm, nice.
And and we, by the way, before we start this meeting, she assisted getting us up on, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, uh, getting us up on Zoom. So thank you very much. Um, I strongly recommend it for the position.
And you have a bachelor's degree in hotel management?
I do, yeah.
Wow.
Okay, um, Priscilla.
I do. Um, I went to school for hotel management, but I didn't pursue this career for too long. It was not what I wanted. It is because my father obligated.
We need a motion and a second, item twenty-four.
Hello.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion is to appoint Priscilla Pimental from Westbridge Water. To the position of affordable housing LIHTC asset manager effective October sixteen, twenty twenty-three. At the twenty twenty-three step one rate of fifty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars per annum. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none. We'll call Mr. Tibo.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Priscilla, the same, uh, can we say the same thing I told the other two girls? That we put our residents first. They're number one on our list. And what else them, they don't need us. They don't need us, they don't need you. So we put them first. So I hope that you do the same. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Aren't they gonna miss you at the home for little wanderers?
Um, I think they're already missing me there.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's a wonderful place.
Yeah, it sure is.
Item twenty-five, exec- executive jurisdiction report, exhibit V in your package, Mr. Tibo.
And so a- as you uh know, you have a six-page report. I won't go into this. I I do want to just mention, we just um hired. A confirmed three people who are going to be working at the housing authority, which excites me to know when. Uh, we are an organization. These buildings are really not our assets. It's the people who make sure that the. Uh, participants who live in them and the buildings they uh in good care. It's the people who are our assets and I'm really excited about this. Um, in my uh report, I told you a little bit about the um hiring um world, which has been difficult. We're seeing it break. We're seeing calls to. Quality candidates, like the ones that you see today, coming through the doors uh more and more. So I'm I'm excited about that. Uh, because the more people that we have of like mind with good work ethic, uh, the easier our job is. And uh. I was speaking with Anya Holland today, who's here, our Assistant Director of Finance, and who's been here, what, five months now, Tony? and who's been here, what, five months now, Anya?
Almost five.
Almost five months, and she said, this is a very nice place to work, people work together. I want to mention tomorrow, uh, the twenty-eighth, we're doing the playground build at Washburn Heights, and it, it's really a, a team-building experience. It's been led by Ally Lawler, the asset manager over at Sullivan Towers. Dennis was up there yesterday wheelbarreling and getting things ready. Tomorrow, the name of the organization is Kaboom, and the reason it's called Kaboom, when I saw that, is what that's, what's that all about? Tomorrow, it's going to go kaboom. You'll walk in, it'll be a, just a, a bunch of dirt, and by two-thirty, there will be a finished playground. A big playground, too, something of substance, so. And the nice thing about that is we had people from finance, people from maintenance, capital improvements, Mister Barry and Nancy, people, uh, people from rental assistance, everybody coming together to build a playground, not to do their job. And it was really just a great, great experience, and I, I think it's important for the board to, to know that. And you're all invited, by the way, it'll be, uh, we've sent out invitations. Kaboom, one thing, it is a corporation, they like publicity. They put together a publicity plan, but they, I guess, they, maybe CBS will show up, I don't know. But they really do, and they, they've done this, uh, we have partnered with CarMax. This is CarMax, it's ninety-ninth playground they've built from here. The gentleman who, uh, Mike, I can't think of Mike's last name, uh, he's applying from here to Los Angeles to build the next playground. This is quite an event, and we're excited about it. I just, a couple of other things, like Chris mentioned, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. I don't remember if I had spoken to the board about this, that's, the Department of Housing and Community Development was elevated to an executive office and is now no longer, it's the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So we're also getting used to that, so if you hear us say DHCD and ELHLC, it's the same thing. But they have a secretary now who sits at the table with the governor, Governor Healy brought that position.
Oh, good.
Elevated that position. Our fee accountant, Rich Carnlin, he's been with us for forty years, almost forty years, he started in eighty-four. He has sold his practice, and he sold it to Markham. Markham is a national accounting firm, and they have a housing authority arm. The gentleman who runs that housing authority arm is a guy by the name of Mike Guyder, I know Mike well, worked on a number of projects, so this is important to the board because the fee accountant is there to make sure that if we aren't doing something right here, that we capture that early. So the fee accountant comes in once a month, reviews our books, the auditor comes in once a year, reviews our books and the financials, and so it just makes sure we don't go off in the, in the wrong direction. And, but Rich Carnlin will be working with us for the next two years as a transition. We did meet with Mike Guyder and his crew down at Sea Craft, uh, a couple of weeks ago. I mentioned the playground, we, we're moving along with Impello as interest rates go up. That makes it more expensive to do the project, so we're probably looking to basing now. We also received a little bit of bad news this morning. They have qualifying census tracts that the government says, hey, this is where we really need to put our money. And Campello has been, Campello High Rise has been in that for years, as far back as we can see. This year, it was taken out.
Ooh.
There's a circle that goes around it. Saw the map this morning, Dennis, right? It's a circle that goes around it. We think there's a problem with their data, and in fact, just before I met with Carol, I was reviewing the, uh, Federal Register to see if we can appeal this. They also say, and it's tied to the smaller area of fair market rents, and they say that the Campello High, the Campello area on the west side of Brockton is much less expensive than the east side of Brockton. Now, anybody who grew up in Brockton knows that that's never been.
It's never been.
On the west side, it's moving on up.
Yeah.
And so we, we do, we are looking for ways to challenge that, it's challenging the federal government, but, uh, the reason that's so important is they give you bonus points, and it's up to, for our projects, it's an extra twenty-four million dollars. And so if we can't get that change, we need to find another twenty-four million dollars.
Oh, gosh.
But again, this was discovered, the, the Federal Register was just published a couple of days ago. We'll be working on that, but it's something that the board should know about. Every, oh, just the other thing, uh, we did, as you know, at our last meeting, um, take by eminent domain thirteen sixty-two Main Street. We are now, uh, talking to the previous owner. We will charge them rent for the time they stay there. We are now, we have insured it, we are now responsible to maintain it. They, we, I won't get into the estimated rent right now, but we will be sharing that with them very shortly on October tenth. Mister DeChristopher, our relocation agent, uh, will be meeting with the owner there, uh, taking the keys and that, and getting, moving on with that, and we will be closing on it shortly. Just like a, a closing for a house, if you would buy a house, all, all the, you know, we have to get the electricity all paid off in, in our name, we have to do the water, make sure there are no leans on the places, so it'll be a, a closing in a, an attorney's office, just like anything else. But it is moving on.
You know, Tom, I don't know if you remember the, um, when they built the playground behind the central YMCA in Brockton a few years back, and it was very exciting, and all the people who worked at the Y were out there digging and, you know, and they'd take all the pictures, and they had Patriots players there also, which made it more exciting, and a few cheerleaders. I don't know if they'll be at the, at Washburn Heights, but, um, but it is a big deal and exciting, so.
Well, the celebrities we have will be our staff, our residents.
They can do a few cheers.
But, by the way, just on that, I wanted, so I went, they had a day where they got the families together, and they said, what would you like to see in a playground? And they had all sorts of exercises, so they had kids four, five, seven, eight, ten, twelve, they were drawing pictures, they were putting stuff together. And the asset manager said to me, you know, this is the first time I've seen people look and look at. The parents are getting together, they're getting to know each other, it's becoming, it's bringing some life to the community, which is what the playground should do, uh, so just that little exercise was wonderful. It, it really does involve the residents, the residents, uh, will be there. Now, by the way, tomorrow at two-thirty, there'll be sort of a ribbon cutting. You can't play on it because the spent hasn't hardened, and so on Monday, at what time? Three, three-thirty, we're here waiting for the kids to get out of school. Monday at three-thirty, they're gonna try to have another ribbon cut, you know, kids jump on this stuff and, and play.
But, well, they had, they, they built this playground, even though it's right behind the, um, the actual Y, it's part of the, their third residence for homeless families, so there, there were kids that were out at, at that one, too.
Yeah, Vivian Renee has been working with us on that.
Oh, good, good. Very good. I, I, we're not done yet, I, I just want to ask two questions before we're done, so. Is it all right to ask now?
Hang, we get, hang on a second.
Okay. Okay.
We need a motion, item twenty-five, to accept the report and put on file.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trast. Motion is to executive, executive director's report and put on file. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mister Tivo.
Commissioner Trast.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mister Chairman.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Item twenty-six, all business, any all business? Hearing none. Item twenty-seven, new business. Janet, you have something?
Just, just a couple of questions, um, I just wonder, have you heard, Tom, you know, like, on a national basis, I guess, Venezuelan immigrants that we hear are coming by the thousands to this country to help in the workforce? Have you heard anything about this, you know?
No, I, I've been in several meetings regarding the Haitian immigrants that are already here, and what, uh, the housing authorities can do, if anything. There were some articles written in the Boston Globe, and, uh, WBRI, DUR did some stories on it, but I have not heard anything about that, other than advocates for people getting their work papers to sort of, uh, help with some work shortages in different cities around the country, but nothing here in Brockton.
Okay, or not Boston either, especially?
I have not, I believe Massachusetts is overwhelmed right now.
I see.
So that would be sort of a second wave, and I know they're overwhelmed. The number I heard was they were paying forty-five million dollars a month, uh, to house the current, uh, population. Forty-five million dollars a month. The entire state, for fifty thousand state units, gets a hundred and seven million dollars a year. So you can see, we're, prior to this, we're investing a hundred and seven, uh, million dollars to take care of fifty thousand families, and now you're doing forty-five million dollars a month to temporarily house, uh, people around the state.
And my other question was about COVID, because I, I'm hearing of it, you know, just on a personal level, you know, from a number of people that are getting COVID again, just wondering at the housing authority if it's an issue.
Yes, we, uh, last week, we had both, um, personnel at, uh, the maintenance personnel at Campello go home. We've had several, several, uh, little breakouts. Nobody has gotten seriously ill, uh, we have not heard of any of our residents, uh, getting seriously ill. So hopefully the vaccinations have worked to lessen, but the positivity is there. It's the, um, and I don't know, I have not heard anything about, uh, the challenges that the hospitals, that the hospital has been facing, I haven't heard anything about that, which I, I believe would come out of the mayor's office if it was happening. I don't know if, uh, Mister DeGrace has anything to comment on that.
No current updates at this time, but I can get them for you if you need them.
Good.
Thank you.
Good. So I, I hope eventually, like the health department, like they did previously, will be able to do testing if needed and give the injections as needed, um, but I, I don't know that, I guess that's a while coming.
Yeah, I know, you know, we have, um, the resources in place, the PPE and stuff that, you know, and we have, uh, all the requisite testing materials that we, we need, so it's just a matter of people, you know, needing them, reaching out and asking for them, and, you know, and the number's just going up, you know, it's, it's, it seems like the number's been going up a little bit, but like, like Tom said, um, knock on wood, it hasn't been too serious in any of these cases, so. You know, we'll just, we'll just be awaiting word from the Board of Health and from the state, uh, and from the, the, the people at the hospitals. But, you know, again, like I said, it hasn't, you know, thankfully, it hasn't been too bad yet.
That's good.
I did, uh, speak to, uh, Jennifer from, uh, the Department of Public Health yesterday, she's at, uh, Washburn Heights, we have a nurse there.
Really?
She told me that they do have the flu vaccine, they're expecting to get some Moderna vaccine, they will be starting off at the Council on Aging, and then they'll schedule things for, uh, uh, high-rises in our healthiest sites.
Does Jennifer just go there like once a week or something, or?
No, she's, she's up at Washburn Heights, because we were required to have a nurse there for all three days. When they took a look at us, they said, we better get some medical help. But, uh, so she's there for that, um, but yes, no, they've been, uh, involved with us for the entire pandemic, they've been absolutely wonderful. Absolutely wonderful in multiple ways, not only in the medical care that they provide, but in the bond that they've made with our, our residents.
Good.
Any other new business items? I had one, I just wanted to mention, it was in your report, Tom, about the mayor's ice cream social. It was well-attended, with a lot of properties. And everybody seemed to love it. It's something we have to do all the time. And the other thing, Jay, would you let the mayor know?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I was just gonna say, you know, we were, we were blessed to be able to kind of have such great turnout to all of those. I, I was able to attend a few myself, and it was, um, definitely seemed like we got a really great reception of it, you know, uh, with that, you know, so I'm sure the mayor, you know, as long as he's in, in an office, is gonna be trying to do some stuff, um, at the, uh, each, each, each property every year, and I'll surely, uh, share with him, uh, your message.
The other part of it is let him know about tomorrow, the two-thirty, we kaboom on the playground, Washburn Heights.
Okay, yeah, I will, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Okay, so it's two-thirty, Washburn Heights, okay, I'll make sure that's on the schedule.
Washburn Heights is on Main, not Main Street. In Montauk.
Right, right, yep. Okay, yeah, I'll make sure that we have that on our schedule. Two-thirty, Washburn Heights, all right, thank you.
Item twenty-eight, we need a motion and a second.
Oh, so moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trast, motion is to adjourn. Don't leave yet. Roll call, Mister Tivo.
Commissioner Trast.
Yes.
Commissioner Pettifat.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mister Chairman.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.